It's there, I decided to use it. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Albany City Council Work Session of Monday, March 11, 2024. I'm Marilyn Smith, I'm the council president, sitting in for Mayor Johnson, who is out of town. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 4:00 PM and take a roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Quixtonson II, Acting Mayor Marilyn Smith.
Here.
Councillors Newton.
Present.
Novak.
Here.
Montague.
Here.
Kopczynski.
Here.
And McGee.
Present.
Six councillors present, Your Honor.
Thank you. It's time for business from the public. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience who wants to address the council at this time? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the first item of the irregular agenda. The update from our consultants on the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan.
Real quick. Thank you, council. I just want to do a brief introduction. You may remember about a year ago, a little over a year ago, January 13, 2023, was your city engineer Stacy Bell Castro and Heather Bersick from MIG presented to you the Right-of-Way Transition Plan, Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. And at that time, we were also working on the Parks and Rec and Citywide Transition Plan. So today, our consultants from MIG, Lena Roper and Darcy Rzynski, are here to present to you the plan that was in your packet. You know, having this transition plan in place will allow the city to move forward to address ADA accommodations systematically and meaningfully. The plan outlines our priorities and raises the city experience for all citizens, including physical, digital, and programmatically. It also fulfills our compliance requirements, as outlined in Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And the way I like to think about this document is the Transition Plan is a long-term plan to address, a long-term living plan to address accessibility barriers and provide equitable experiences for all citizens. And after their presentation, I want to give a brief update on a couple of projects that we're already working on in the city. But I'll turn it over to Lena and Darcy now.
Thank you. Thank you. Just gonna get set up here for a second. One more time. Hi, my name's Lena. I'm here with Darcy on behalf of MIG, and we are the consultants who've been assisting the City of Albany with the Transition Plan. Thanks so much for making time to hear this presentation. So, can you get the, there we go. There we go. The Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, as we know, is a civil rights law that mandates equal opportunity for individuals with disabilities. And it's composed of five titles. The one that is the focus of this project is Title II, which addresses specifically public transportation, state and local government services. The requirements of Title II are that the city is required to produce a self-evaluation and transition plan, also known as an SETP, identify a person to oversee Title II implementation, which is usually the ADA coordinator, publish a notice and grievance procedure for accessibility complaints, and continue to remove accessibility barriers and document progress over time. Importantly, the process also has to include people with disabilities in the preparation of the plan. The components of a self-evaluation are to evaluate the services, policies, and practices of the city, and identify modifications to those policies. And then the Transition Plan is more focused on physical barriers in city facilities. We are to list the barriers, identify solutions, and establish a timeline for removing barriers, and who is responsible for making sure that happens. And then engaging the public is also required as part of the self-evaluation Transition Plan process. So this presentation may look a little familiar because you have already seen the Public Right-of-Way Transition Plan that was completed between 2021 and 2022 and presented here in January of 2023, as Eric mentioned. And then, next slide. This is the combined plan, includes the Public Right-of-Way Plan and also parks and citywide facilities that have been assessed as of 2022, and that combined plan is finally finished today. So we'll just briefly walk through the process of how the Transition Plan was created. The steps were to engage the public, evaluate the program's policies and activities, assess park building, trail, and right-of-way facilities, prioritize and schedule the barrier removal actions, and then produce the completed plan. So for engaging the public, an advisory group was assembled, composed of members of the community who have disabilities or represent organizations that support people with disabilities. And that group met three times. The first meeting was kind of an overview of the process and opening the floor for any general complaints or things that are working well or could use improvement as far as the policies and the city facilities. The second meeting, we reviewed the results of the self-evaluation and the facility assessments, and got feedback on those. And then the third meeting was to review the draft of the SETP document, after which we incorporated comments from the advisory group and then published the draft for public comment from December 1st through January 31st, making it a little bit extra long of a comment period just because people are very busy during that holiday season. So as far as evaluating the city program's policies and activities, there were kind of two portions of this. One was reviewing actual policy documents, such as the municipal code for areas where the code could be in conflict with Title II requirements, or there could be rephrasings to improve its alignment with the ADA language. And then the second component was a survey sent out to city staff about the policies and programs in their department and how those policies were being implemented, so that we could also see, you know, how the policies are implemented in real life. The self-evaluation report goes into quite a bit of detail, and it includes all of these categories that you see on the screen. The training, contracting and licensing, public meetings, transportation services, adaptive equipment, printed information, televised and audiovisual information, just to name a few. It goes quite in-depth and also includes recommended actions to maintain alignment with the Title II requirements. So in the previous scope, which was the Public Right-of-Way, there was an assessment of, as we would think, all the elements in the Public Right-of-Way, curb ramps, sidewalks, crosswalks, transit stops, all of the elements that are part of the streetscape. Next slide. This time around, we also assessed Parks and Recreation Facilities, which included assembly areas, doors and gates, drinking fountains, game and sports areas, outdoor constructed features, which is a term from the ABA and encompasses basically benches, trashcans, and that kind of small features. Parking areas, picnic areas, play equipment areas and playgrounds, the restrooms, routes between these different elements, and special site functions. Special site functions, there's just any function that is unique to that site, like a swimming pool. And then "other" is a catch-all category, which in the case of Albany, usually the most common other item in parks was dog waste bags. It's one of those things that's too specific to be in the ADA, but if it's provided, it should be accessible, so we included those two. And then in other city facilities, these were mostly buildings and/or parking structures. So the kind of components we would assess here would be built-in elements, doors and gates again, drinking fountains, elevators, food and dining areas, game and sports areas that are interior-like gems. Interior space features is kind of including light switches and windows, parking areas, restrooms, routes between these features, special site functions, such as the stacks area of a library, and other. And the most common other feature for indoor environments is usually fire extinguishers and AED equipment. So this facility assessment included a lot of detail, and we were able to produce a summary report that addressed the facility barriers by feature type and categorized the costs by barrier category. But behind all of this summary report was a lot of information that the city will have on an ongoing basis, such as GIS data points, location diagrams, photos of the existing conditions at the time of assessment, a description of the existing conditions in contrast to the requirements, recommended actions, code citation from the relevant standard, and the category that had been assigned to that particular barrier, and a planning level cost estimate for the barrier removal action. So the next step after creating this huge inventory of barriers was to prioritize and schedule those remediation activities. And the city went through a process, working with the ADA Advisory Group, to determine what criteria that we were going to use to prioritize removal of barriers. And the three most important criteria that were selected was, number one, citizen rights and responsibilities. So this would be facilities or barriers in facilities where services are provided for citizens to exercise their civil rights, such as participation in these meetings, access to elected officials, paying taxes, and acquiring permits. The next criteria that was chosen was level of use by the public. This means that facilities that are heavily used and very popular receive a higher level of priority because you have a lot of people who are being served by that facility. And then the third criteria was identified complaints or requests. So if there were any facilities that were receiving a lot of complaints, that folks were having access issues with that facility, that boosted that facility to a higher priority category. So based on those criteria, the facilities were ranked into tiers one through three. Tier one is the highest priority tier. That means something that will be scheduled to renovate within the next five years. Tier two is a medium priority, that's three to seven years from now. And tier three was a lower priority, to be renovated in the next eight to 11 years. And a lot of times, the tier three facilities are ones where the public is very rarely accessing it, like the public-facing portions of the wastewater treatment facilities, where it's just not a frequently-used area. And the schedule is based on the budget cycle. That Albany uses the two-year budget cycle. So each facility is also then split into phases. Phase A is the common barriers, routes, restrooms, parking, customer service touchpoints, kind of the common features that need renovation in a lot of the facilities. And then Phase B is any site-specific barriers that may require more time for planning and design to renovate. So after we had created that schedule, the next step was just to prepare the final plan. And that plan, again, was reviewed by the ADA Stakeholder Advisory Group and the public as part of the public comment period. In the end report, the contents are: Section one introduces the context and the background. Section two, the self-evaluation. Section three, the Transition Plan, again focused on facility, physical barriers, and that schedule. Four includes information on plan implementation. Number five is that Responsible Employee Notice Policy and Grievance Procedure. That's an administrative requirement of the Title II process. Six includes definitions. And section seven includes Program Accessibility Guidelines Standards and Resources, which is where there's just a lot of resources to find more information and details about accommodations for people with disabilities. And then I think I'm going to turn it over to Rick, who's going to provide some updates about what has been happening since this plan was drafted. Or Kim.
This is your taste of an afternoon with Kim, as I'm on the agenda for the rest of the day, so I apologize in advance. So Rick did all the hard work, I'm just going to share it with you. So I'm incredibly proud of Rick and the Park Maintenance and Building Maintenance Team is we got a look at our very lengthy, as you can imagine, report. It's like 400 pages across all of our Excel pages, full of information. And it's a little bit overwhelming, especially, you know, as you come into a busy season and financial restrictions and all that kind of good stuff. So I'm incredibly proud of the work that they have done. So they've gone through and they've put it together on a couple tracks. Track one, we were fortunate enough to get ARPA funds, American, I forgot even what the acronym, Rescue Plan Act, thank you, it's been so long. Counsel, we are very appreciative, as when we were allotting those funds, $200,000 were put towards making improvements. So what that comes down to are several large ADA concrete projects at a handful of our parks. It goes a really wonderful way in making some improvements, but it's not across every park and it's not every ramp, so we still have a long way to go. But we're going to be working with a contractor, and next estimated completion is at the end of this summer. Track two are building improvements. That's Riverfront Community Center, Albany Community Pool, and then other facilities as their use rise to occasion. As it mentions, these are low-cost but high-time activities. It's, you know, changing out kickplates, it's installing signs. Our building maintenance crew has been going through, and I got to actually import today quite a few that say "completed", which is pretty amazing. So once again, lower dollar amounts, but it does take a significant amount of time, and it gets worked in between the other theoretical fires, mostly not physical fires that happen, that our building maintenance crew has to deal with. So, you can move to the next one. Track three, general park, you never know, I'm going to knock on swat. So, general park improvements per the Transition Plan. So anytime we tackle a park, so Henderson, we had issues in Henderson. But when we worked with our contractor to redevelop that, those issues got taken care of. As we're looking towards Deerfield, we are hoping to solve all of our ADA issues in Deerfield. So additionally, on larger projects, we're starting at Eleanor Hackelman, as there were quite a few that could be taken care of there that were within our scope financially and within our staffing resources. Track four is parking lot striping, estimated completion at the end of 2024. Almost all of our ADA striping is not accurate anymore. So Becky Hunter-Fomke is working on a citywide effort to update this striping plan, and we're actually partnering with Streets as they go out for contract every year, so that we're not duplicating efforts and we're being efficient. So we'll be able to transition some funds to Streets to offset the projects that economy scale. We're feeling pretty good about that. So, and then track five, assisting city departments with ADA issues. So once this plan's identified, our building maintenance crew will be going out and meeting with each of the departments and each of the facility owners to say, okay, let's take a look at your list, let's take a look at your budget, let's take a look at what we feel like we can accomplish, and start checking them off. So like I said, Rick and his crew has done all the hard work. I'm just the lucky gal that gets to tell you a little bit about it. On behalf of this group, are there any questions that you would like to ask us?
So, technical question. On page 98, and you showed it on your slides, it looks like you don't have any, you kind of staggered the phases for '24 to '27, and then '27 to '29. But in '29 to '31, there's no Phase A. Is that intentional, or?
Okay, can you repeat the question?
So it's on page 98. It was on one of your slides, but when you were talking about the Phase A and Phase B, I'm noticing in 2029 and 2031, you have no Phase As starting, where before that, you were kind of staggering Phase As and Phase Bs.
Right, so the tier, because the tier-one facilities are a high priority, those are initiated first, and then the tier-two overlaps those, starting some of the tier-two Phase A, while tier-one Phase B is still being completed. And then only after both of the two higher priority phases are completed is the third phase started.
Got it, that makes sense. Okay, thank you, that was my first question. Do I get more questions, can I have more questions? Okay. Eric, so you're the Disability Access Coordinator, correct? So is that new, is that a new role, or have you always been in that role? I know, I'm going to, Jake, you come up here, I'm so sorry.
He has, Councilor Montague, Eric agreed about three years ago to take that on as an extra duty. We had nobody handling ADA coordination, so Eric kindly agreed to do that. It is something, however, that we contemplate having a deputy city manager do.
Okay, because I was wondering, my question was, have we built that in our staffing plan, that extra time that it's going to take you to do that? How are you going to juggle your other duties and this?
Yeah, it's been fun. No, it's actually, this project in particular has taken a bulk of my dedicated ADA time. As far as being the coordinator, there's been very, very few circumstances where somebody from the, a citizen has contacted me to do some of the other things. And oftentimes, that is not too dissimilar from a librarian, is I don't know all the answers, but I know the people back there who I can send them to to give them the right answers. So that's usually kind of how the ADA coordinator role works. If somebody has a concern, I get them to the right person. So that aspect of the job hasn't been too time-consuming. This has been a lot, but you know, it's also been three years, so it's been metered out pretty well, so.
Okay, and then my last question is, are we anticipating repeating the self-evaluation after a time to see how we're doing?
What is best practice for that? I mean, I would think so. I would think, you know, after we've had a chance to really implement some staff training, because that was one common theme that was pointed out, was staff just needs some training. And we have done a little bit of training here and there, but that will be something that we prioritize. But you know, hopefully, you know, three to five years, we'll be able to have another evaluation similar and just see, hope that staff have learned more, and we've given them more opportunities, so.
Yeah, I would like to see that, thank you. That was all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. I have some questions, and I don't want to get off in the weeds, so if this isn't in-the-weeds question, you can just say no, Counselor Novak. We'll talk to you about that privately later. But because I've never read about these things, some of them. I was curious, from page 11, which on my reader was also bolded as page 20, I was curious as to what the two questions are that someone may ask regarding service animals. I'd hate to ask the wrong thing, or not, you know, ask the right thing. Can you educate me?
Yeah, that's a great question. And this is an interesting, service animals are an interesting area because there's many places in the ADA where the requirements are quite broad, and then just refer to detailed technical standards. But the service animals are specifically outlined in the legislation. So the two questions are, is this an animal that is trained to provide a service in support of a disability? And then what is the service that animal provides? So you cannot require documentation or paperwork of any kind. You can't ask what the person's disability is, or what happens if they don't, you know. So the understanding is that service animals are highly trained. They're usually not a problem in terms of behavior or housebrokenness because they have a lot of specialized training to serve that person in a specific way. And so those two questions are targeted at ascertaining that it is in fact a service animal trained to perform a specific duty.
Thank you. So since that wasn't too far in the weeds, may I continue with some additional questions? Thank you.
Let's get in the weeds.
Thank you so much. I've never seen a service dog not on a leash and didn't realize that they are, quote, "required" to be off-leash. That's from page 12 and bolded page 21. Service dogs off-leash? Even in the photo that we have, it showed a dog on the leash.
They are not, not all service dogs are required to be off-leash, but they cannot be required to be on leash. For example, some service dogs, their task will be to fetch items for the person who is their handler, or to go get help in case there's a seizure or some kind of medical event. So the dog needs the freedom to perform their task. Or for example, in the example of a seeing-eye dog, they wear a harness, but it's not truly a leash. So the page you're looking at is intended to convey that you cannot require a service animal to be on a leash because it might interfere with their job performance.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, do they accommodate for tours and trips? And if so, does that include for care providers and aides? Not to make you jump back up, but.
Sure, so we do our best because we want to, well, obviously, we want to make sure that everybody has access. So if somebody is an aide or a care provider, they are essentially treated as another person. They aren't charged for the trip because we want to make sure that they're able to participate. They're essentially serving another person, so we count them as one.
I am so happy to hear that, thank you. That's wonderful to hear. Forgive me, I have just a few more. I was wondering also, what department has CART devices? Communication Access Real-Time Translation, as only one department has that at the moment. Which department would that be?
That is a great question, and one that we can get back to you on.
I wonder if we can find out, okay. Thank you. There's a typo, this is just for what it's worth. This is the sort of thing that Counselor Smith would normally point out, but I'm beating her to the punch. Top of page 23 or 32 in bold, it's DKKKKKissabilities, just so you know.
Thank you, that is definitely a sticky key error.
I knew you were headed there, but I'm, since I'm on the floor at the moment, so. Another question from page 29, which is bolded page 38. How soon can plans and procedures be implemented to assist those with disabilities for emergency notifications and evacuation support? Kind of concerning.
Yeah, so this would be something that we would work with, you know, primarily Chuck Corino on, and he's actually pretty up to speed on these sorts of things, so. But yeah, that's a, probably will just be a meeting with Chuck, and we'll sit down and take a look at all the plans and see what we can do and what we can improve. I don't think it'll take, Chuck's on it with these sorts of things, so I don't think it'll take too terribly long to update those sorts of plans, so.
Thank you. And with regard to that, do we have any idea how many people in the City of Albany have disabilities who would need assistance if there were need for an evacuation? Do we have any idea?
I don't have numbers for Albany. I can say I think that the last census had, I think, something like 14% of population overall in general in the United States, so that might be a starting point for an estimate.
Well, thank you, 14% helps, overall. And then this, first of all, before I even say this, I want to commend you all for the work that went into this, and I know it was MIG and all of y'all, so. On page 30, or bolded page 39, in the last paragraph, it says, "There's no way to monitor and track the city's efforts to meet obligations under the ADA." What do we do with that?
Can you say the page number again?
Yes, page 30. My pages showed two numbers. There was a bolded page 39, lighter number, page 30. It's the last paragraph on that page.
Sorry, just finding it there.
Okay.
Yeah, I can answer that. This is actually something that's, something I've been doing and something that is in progress, and as part of the result of this entire Transition Plan. So this is 100 pages. There's an additional, you know, 400-page document with all the maps. There's a spreadsheet with 30 columns and 2,000 rows of things that we're tracking. And then also, as I was talking about, if I And then also, as I was talking about, if I receive a contact from a citizen about an issue, I have, I document that, I have it all saved in my files, and I will, that way I can follow up. I rarely have to do that, usually the staff will tell me that they've addressed it already, but then I follow up and I have, I have kind of an informal tracking system that I will be working to tie up and put in a nice, put a bow on to give to the deputy city manager when they start, so. But we do have those processes in place. It wasn't something, it was, I think previously, the tracking of this was just kind of, you know, the departments handled it on their own and, you know, it was a little bit of like, there's a fire over here, put it out, there's a fire over here, put it out. That's really the benefit of this plan is that we have, we know, we know where the hot points are and we know that what we can do to kind of get those started and, or to take care of those as we go, so.
So is it safe to assume that with the implementation of all this information, that there will at some point in the not distant future hopefully be a means of tracking?
So there is a means, so like the giant spreadsheet is kind of the means of tracking right now, so yeah. I was just looking at it today and envisioning other ways to figure out how to make, how to make a 2,000-row spreadsheet less diabolical.
I don't envy you.
There's also GIS data that was transferred to the city, which my understanding is that's not the primary tracking device used right now, but it would be available in the future if it goes that way.
Thank you.
Regarding, I thought initially your question might be regarding the self-evaluation, the policies portion, is that?
No, I just was, I found it a little tiny bit concerning that it says, there's no way to monitor and track the city's efforts to meet obligations under the ADA. Like, well then, what's the point of the 5 million pages and the, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, this section is from the self-evaluation where it is a comment stating that there was not a clear method implemented at the time of the self-evaluation.
Thank you.
So our recommendation would be to implement a tracking method for policy updates specifically. The tracking of the facility barriers is a little bit more specifically outlined in the ADA legislation and there's, you know, like Eric was mentioning, a giant spreadsheet that documents each individual one. The policy updates are kind of understood to be, as soon as possible, update your policy because those policies typically consist of some written documentation and some internal process that can be modified relatively quickly.
Thank you.
Counselors to the south, do you have any questions? I have a couple. I wanted to know how much public comment was received during the comment period.
Oh, that's a disappointment. Sadly, sadly none. But we had worked closely with our group, the ADA group before, and we've gotten good feedback from them and they worked with us to contact groups that they're involved with and got some feedback from there. But yeah, I was surprised because in the original, or not the original, but in the self-evaluation plan, there was a decent amount of public comment received, you know, as those things go. But yeah, unfortunately, there wasn't any, but I think, while that was a little discouraging, I think the fact that this is, as I said, this is a living document, this can change, the priorities can change if we do receive the feedback from citizens about, about anything that can kind of lead us to adjusting how this plan looks, so.
Just some general comments that I made some notes as I went through the plan and things that I wanted to mention in particular. I was impressed with the summary of the staff comments from the self-evaluation. I know what it's like to not know everything that your department does and everything that the individual employees or supervisors do in a department and it, some departments are very big and there's just no way for everybody to keep track of what's going on. So it's nice to see that documented and recognize that as something that can be addressed or at least helped in some way. I read the definitions at the end. My mom used to tell me, don't leave the movie before you go through the credits because you can see where it was filmed and how they did this and how they did that and who was responsible for what. And the definitions were like that for me. I learned what service animals are. I learned about people with physical or mental impairments and the phrase that, well, there are just, there are a lot of things in there that are common terms in the world of addressing, fitting our world to everyone. It's the world that we take for granted, able-bodied people take for granted. I'm not exactly able-bodied myself right now. I've had cataract surgery on both eyes in the last month and not everything is as clear to me as it could be, but some things are more clear. So I recognize some of those things. It just, you learn a lot by reading a report like this and understanding how complicated the world is for everybody and way more complicated for some. To address Councilor Novak's concerns about the, about knowing how many people have disabilities and/or conditions that need to be accommodated in an emergency, the emergency planning group here meets regularly to discuss what they, the emergency planning term for it is vulnerable populations. And they're right on top of that. They're aware of how many facilities are in town for people who are not able to live independently. They, I'm sure there are lists of people who do live independently but receive other care, and so that is top of mind and there are plans for notification, evacuations, that kind of stuff, and it's updated regularly.
Good to know. Thank you.
I think that probably ends my sermon, but thank you so much for doing this. I think it's been an education for everybody who works here and I hope it puts the general public at ease, knowing that we're supposed to care, but we really do care and we're doing something about it. So thanks for all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thanks. There's no other comments on that topic. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, the grant and endowment from the Scharf Foundation.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and bring these to your attention. So I am here today as, thankfully you get to see me pretty much annually come for this one, as we have caring folks in our community who very much appreciate our water safety awareness program. Excuse me. So that program is one that we do not have funded through our general Parks and Recreation Fund. It has been for the last 10, 15 years supported very much by the Scharf Foundation. So as we look towards budgeting, towards the 2024, 2025 school year, I'm here to ask, to let you all know that we've received two pots of funding. One is from the Scharf Foundation directly for $50,000 to help offset the cost of our water safety awareness program. And then the other one is from, from a Scharf Endowment that is at the Greater Albany Public Schools Foundation, and we're going to be receiving $38,000 for that one. So between those two, it will cover our water safety awareness program, which will bring about 1,400 kiddos, third and fourth graders, for eight days of water safety at our Albany Community Pool next year. And then any remaining will go towards just general routine maintenance for an aquatics facility, which there is plenty of. So I'm here today just to answer any questions that you may have. If not, it'll appear on the consent agenda on Wednesday. Any questions?
It's always lovely to hear about a gift, and this is a gift that keeps giving, so thank you for making us aware of that. Please proceed to discuss the application for the grant for Deerfield Park.
Sure. So Deerfield Park, which is down off Waverly and Ward III, it's 10.89 acres. It was actually owned by the school district until 2018. We took it over at that point and it, the play equipment is almost as old as I am, so. And outside of that, it hasn't had a lot of TLC and investment put into it. So it's been on our master plan since 2021 to take a look at it and update as after Henderson, that was our oldest play structures out there, and we've had to take things away over the years that have not been able to come back. And so when we were looking forward to doing this project, we had originally put $250,000 away, as that's what was roughly estimated in our master plan. As we know, five years have gone, well, four years have gone by and those estimates are nowhere near what would need to happen to do just a fraction of the project. So knowing this, we have been saving our pennies for the last couple of years so that we could have more of a sizable amount to put towards this. So our department, we've got about $750,000, but still that's not nearly enough to take care of a playground and some sidewalks. So I am here today to tell you a little bit more about a Oregon Department of Recreation Grant through the state Parks and Recs. They have local government grant. A really amazing thing has happened as last year and every year prior, there's been about 10 to 13 million dollars available for this annual grant. As far as the legislature, there was something written in many years ago that once lottery funds hit a certain amount, that more money would be released specifically for this grant program. So this year, we, there's about $33 million available. So everybody is applying for money and we want to be one of them. So it is a matching grant, you have to have a one-to-one match, and we think that we are pretty competitive if we go in and apply for somewhere between 450 and $500,000 to add to this project. So working with Langgo Hansen, who is a landscape architect firm, they have applied for many of these and have only not been awarded once, so I appreciate their competitive nature. It's exactly what I wanted to hear. And so we're working with them and with hopefully y'all's approval on Wednesday night on the consent calendar, we will be applying for a local government's grant on April 1st, which if awarded, we would be notified in September, which will help us as we go out for creating our bid documents and construction plans in the hopes that Deerfield will have a makeover starting next summer and into next fall. Yes.
Question, what do you project as the amount of funding you need to give Deerfield the makeover that it requires?
Well, I love that question. So we're anticipating it'll probably be, with our current estimates, we're hoping it'll come in between 1 and 1.3 million.
Wow, that's a lot more than 250,000.
It's a lot more. So when you think about it, we just put in Meadow Ridge, that's a 1.8 acre park, and granted, it was starting from scratch, but that one was about 1.2, well, 1.3 million. So, and that's 1.8 acres, so it's almost, it's so small. It costs a lot of money to put porous concrete in places and to put ADA accessible sidewalks and just create safe spaces that are going to be there for the next 40 years before it gets touched again. So, and that is very minimum. Deerfield is a neighborhood park, so you're not going to have major sports complexes out there, you're not going to have picnic shelters, no flush reg rooms, no lighting, those are all big ticket items. So essentially, about a million dollars will get us a new play structure, a soft surface trail, and needed ADA improvements in a sidewalk. So if we don't get all of those things, if we do not get this grant, we probably will not have a soft surface trail, we probably will have a much smaller play equipment area, and most of the money will go towards putting in needed sidewalks and accessibility opportunities. Does that help?
Other questions?
I'm just curious what will happen to the old playground? Will it be like recycled for money? Take it down to Bircham or something? It will make its way to Bircham, so. Perfect. So yeah. All right. I'm trying to rescue the little play animals though on the rocker though, I feel like there's an art project in there somewhere. So even if they live in our office for a little while, those need to be saved.
That is so cool.
We'll figure out something. Any other questions?
Good luck out there.
Thank you.
On the green trail.
We have our next public information meeting on the 20th, which is already next week. At our first one, we had about 50 people. When you think of on a wet, rainy Wednesday, people traveling from Deerfield all the way down, the event started at 6:00, some people were there at 5:15. So it is a very passionate community. We got lots of feedback. We know that we're not, I'll go ahead and let you all know this ahead of time, we're not going to make everybody happy and that pretty much kills me, so we're going to try to do the best that we can to make the most happy in the most affordable way possible. So I look forward to getting our latest revised plans from Langgo Hansen and presenting it to the community and then hopefully going from there to make good things happen.
On behalf of the neighborhood, thank you. That was my dog walking route this morning and I look at it with new eyes, well, that was unintended, but I'm looking at it in a different way now, so. I can see the future.
Thank you for your support on that one.
You bet. All right, let's just carry on with the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Youth Authority.
Sure. So as you all know, we work really, we are happy to bring folks on to help us with our very large backlog of ongoing maintenance and everything that it takes to keep our outdoor spaces looking beautiful. So we work with, we're crew already, sheriffs work crew on many projects for cleanups, and there's been this discussion over the last year with the Jackie Winters Transition Program with, which is with the Oregon Youth Authority, to see if there would be opportunities for us to, you know, have working opportunities for the girls that are in transition. And in taking a look at it, we've, we've worked with John Phillips out there, he's wonderful, and we've set aside some money that we would love some additional help. And if it helps people get a better track record, if it helps them get a good sense of possible work environments, and hopefully helps to put a little bit of money back into their pocket, we're more than happy and would love their assistance in some trail maintenance. So this would just be to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Youth Authority to have folks come out and help with trail maintenance in the summer.
Counselors, any questions?
Not necessarily a question, but a comment. Having worked over at Oak Creek and worked with the Oregon Youth Authority on several different capacities, I think this is an amazing opportunity for you all to work with them. Those young people really need the experience and the, and the help and the leg up, so I think this is a really good combination of both. So I'm happy about that.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
So this is a new agreement? We've never done this before?
We've, at least not as long as I've been here. And it sounds like it's been a while. They've reached out to us last year to see if we had any ongoing year-round projects, which we're, we definitely do, but none of us have the line item in our budget for right of way maintenance and park trail maintenance. So we couldn't do everything, so we figured we would start small, as we'd rather say yes than flat out say no. So hopefully this will be the beginning of a really nice partnership.
That's exciting. Other comments or questions? I think it's a super idea. Super idea.
Well, thank you for making those three very easy for me, so I appreciate it very much.
And that will be, all of these will be on the consent calendar on Wednesday.
Off for Wednesday, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselors, we come to the who knows what's going to happen portion of the agenda for Business from the Council, and I will start with Councilor Novak.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening, but I will have some things to share on Wednesday.
Thank you. Councilor McGee?
One thing, the Women's Caucus, we, women elected officials, we talks is this Thursday via Zoom at 6:00 PM. If you need the information, I can forward it to you, but it is in our LOC bulletin.
The guest speaker for that will be Mayor Beatty from Beaverton.
Yes. Sorry, forget.
Yeah, she's terrific. Good speaker. Thank you for mentioning that. Councilor Monague?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Counselor Newton?
Don't have much, but I just wanted to say that I had a wonderful time on Saturday at the DSA Awards Dinner Night, hanging out with you, Peter, and Mayor Johnson and with Matthew Rutgers and his wonderful wife. But yeah, it was a wonderful event, good to see other folks from the business community here in Albany.
Thank you. Thanks for attending. City Manager's Report.
A very short report, it's just a thank you to Eric Eichenoi for taking on the ADA Coordinator responsibilities for three years.
You're here.
Well, I didn't have anything, any comments either, so I'll just mention that.
I didn't know he was here.
Thank you. Lurking in the background. Sorry about that, Councilor Kupczynski. Did I skip you on, well, if you were
Did I skip you on, well, if you would like to back up, do you have any comments about anything that we discussed? I apologize.
I would, I would have raised a little hand on the screen if I did.
Okay, thank you. With that, I think we're going to adjourn at 4:50. We'll be back here on Wednesday.